Good afternoon. The March 15, 2018 meeting of the Tennessee State University Board of Trustees is now called to order. Chairman Walker is not available to attend today's meeting. I am presiding over today's meeting in his absence and in accordance with my role as vice chair of the board. I would first like to ask Reverend Stevenson to give us invocation, please.
Would you be so kind to bow with me in prayer? God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, your love and your kindness. We thank you, God, for this university and the opportunities to serve so many. We pray for your blessings and your wisdom in every decision that is made. We pray for your continued guidance. We love you and in your darling son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. As you will note in your board materials for today's board meeting, we have several items on the agenda for today. I would like to first just thank trustee McKenzie for all of the hoops he went through to get here to this meeting, several council flights. We really appreciate that extra effort that you put forth. I sincerely thank you for that commitment to the board. It was truly a commitment. The second item on the agenda is roll call declaration of a quorum. At this time, we need to call the roll. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Thank you, trustee Cole. Trustee Cole?
Yes, here.
Trustee Corbille?
President.
Trustee Freeman?
Here.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Martin?
Here.
Trustee McKenzie?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell?
Here.
Trustee Sekman?
Here.
Trustee Walker? Trustee Davis?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to now welcome and recognize, if you will please stand, if I call the group the president's cabinet that is here. Thank you. Okay. The deans. And we have the T.HAC representatives here. Thank you. Okay. And also our students. We welcome you that have joined us for today's meeting. The first action item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the November 16, 2017 board meeting. You have in your March 15, 2018 board materials, the minutes for the November 16, 2017 board meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 16, 2017 board meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chairman. Second motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the November 16, 2017 board meeting as reflected and contained in the board material for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
Okay. The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is approval of the calendar for the 2018 board meeting. You have in your March 15, 2018 board material, the calendar of dates for the 2018 board meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve the calendar for the 2018 board meetings as contained in the board material for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the calendar for the 2018 board meetings as contained in the board material for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the Audit Committee report. As the Chair of the Audit Committee, I will report out the actions and other items from today's Audit Committee meeting. The Audit Committee met today to take action on two items, discuss another item, and go into executive session to discuss items deemed confidential under state law. The committee voted to recommend to the full board, one, the approval of the November 16, 2017 Audit Committee meeting minutes, and two, the approval of the Office of Internal Audit Charter. Your board materials contains information on those two items. In addition, President Glover and Director of Internal Audit, Ms. Adrian Davis, discussed the completed internal audits, and executive session followed the discussion. Regarding the action items, as I stated, the Audit Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of the November 16, 2017 Audit Committee meeting as contained in the board material for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. You have in your March 15, 2018 board materials, the minutes for the November 16, 2017 Audit Committee meeting. On behalf of the Audit Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the November 16, 2017 Audit Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the November 16, 2017 Audit Committee meeting as contained in the board material for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
The motion is approved. At the Audit Committee meeting today, the Audit Committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the Office of Internal Audit Charter as reflected and contained in your March 15, 2018 board materials. Pursuant to the Audit Committee Charter, the Audit Committee is responsible for the review and approval of the charter for the university's Office of Internal Audit. The Internal Audit Office Charter is a formal document that defines the Internal Audit Office's purpose, authority, and responsibility. On behalf of the Audit Committee, I move to approve the Office of Internal Audit Charter as contained in the board material for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the Office of Internal Audit Charter as contained in the board materials for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
The motion is approved. This completes the Audit Committee report. The next item on the agenda is the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee report. The vice chair recognizes Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Chair, trustee Martin, to report out the actions, items, and other items for today's Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting.
Thank you. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee met today to take action on two items and received and discussed three other items. The committee voted to recommend to the full board, one, the approval of the November 16, 2017 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting minutes, two, the approval of an off-campus academic program site. In addition, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee received a report on the SACC's 10-year reaffirmation review. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also received reports on academic affairs, students' residential facilities, and student affairs. Information regarding all of those items are contained in your materials for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Regarding the action items, as I stated, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of the November 16, 2017 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in board materials for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the November 16, 2017 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the March 15, 2018 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the November 16, 2017 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
The motion is approved.
With respect to the other action item, the committee voted to recommend to the board the approval of an off-campus academic program site. Information regarding this agenda item is included in the March 15, 2017 board meeting material. In the materials, you will note that the College of Engineering seeks to offer the Bachelor of Science in Electrical Engineering at Nashville Electric Service. Currently, TSU offers an approved Bachelor of Science program in electrical engineering in the college. However, the college has initiated a program whereby NES employees may take courses at the work site. This maintains a cohort-based mode of program delivery. On behalf of the Academic Affairs Committee, I move to approve the off-campus academic program site as contained in the board materials for the March 15, 2018 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the off-campus academic program site as contained in the board materials for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
Okay. The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the Executive Committee report. As the vice chair, I will report out the actions and information items from today's executive committee meeting. The executive committee met today to discuss and vote on specified executive committee agenda items. The committee voted to recommend to the full board, one, the approval of the November 16, 2017 Executive Committee meeting minutes, two, the adoption of the board executive committee procedures governing the president's annual performance review, and three, the approval of the delegation of authority to the executive committee to create employment contract for President Glover. The executive committee also received a report on the presidential compensation review and discussed the president's recommendation for the appointment for the next student trustee. Your March 15, 2018 board materials contained information regarding all the executive committee agenda items. As I stated earlier, the executive committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of November 16, 2017 Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board material for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. On behalf of the executive committee, I move to approve the minutes of the November 16, 2017 Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the November 16, 2017 Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
The motion is approved. The executive committee also voted to recommend to the full board the adoption of executive committee procedures governing the president's annual performance review. Pursuant to Board Policy Number 004, the board shall evaluate the president's job performance on an annual basis. Under Board Policy Number 004, the board delegated to the executive committee the authority to organize and conduct an annual performance review of the president in accordance with procedures adopted by the executive committee. As you recall, at the November 16, 2017 board meeting, the full board addressed the president's annual performance procedures. At that time, after comments by trustee Sekman and discussion by the board, the board voted to refer the procedures back to the executive committee for consideration of modifications to the procedures. The March 15, 2018 board material contained a revised version of the president's annual performance procedures. Under the revised procedures, the executive committee will conduct a comprehensive review of the president's performance every five years as part of the annual performance review process. The revised procedures still grant the executive committee flexibility in soliciting confidential feedback as part of the president's annual performance review. At today's executive committee meeting, the executive committee reviewed the revised procedures and voted to recommend to the full board the adoption of the executive committee procedures governing the president's annual performance review as contained in the March 15, 2018 board materials. On behalf of the executive committee, I move to approve the adoption of the executive committee procedures governing the president's annual performance review as contained in the March 15, 2018 board materials.
I'll move.
Okay. I moved.
I seconded.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the adoption of executive committee procedures governing the president's annual performance review as contained in the March 15, 2018 board materials. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
Okay. The motion is carried and approved. The executive committee also discussed and voted to recommend to the full board that the board delegate authority to the executive committee to create an employment contract for President Glover. The information for this agenda item is included in materials for the March 15, 2018 board meeting. Pursuant to the board's bylaws, the board shall have the authority to prescribe the president's compensation terms and conditions of employment. At today's executive committee meeting, we discussed that the majority of the university's presidents throughout the country serve their respective institutions under an employment contract according to the American Council on Education. This majority included university presidents in the state of Tennessee and several presidents at other HBCUs. The executive committee voted to recommend to the board that the board delegate authority to the executive committee to create an employment contract with President Glover. The contract will contain standard terms associated with university presidential contracts. Furthermore, the contract developed by the executive committee will be presented by the executive committee to the full board for approval at the June 21, 2018 board meeting or a meeting thereafter. On behalf of the executive committee, I move to approve the board's delegation of authority to the executive committee to create an employment contract for President Glover as contained in the March 15, 2018 board materials.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the board's delegation of authority to the executive committee to create an employment contract for President Glover as contained in the March 15, 2018 board materials. Secretary Pendleton, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
Okay. The motion is approved. This completes the executive committee report. The next item on the agenda is the selection and employment of the student trustee. At the inaugural meeting of the board on April 13, 2017, the board appointed Sidney Davis to serve as the board's first student trustee based on President Glover's recommendation. President Glover recommended Ms. Davis after the institution developed criteria, solicited applications from students who were interested in serving as the student trustee, and conducted a review of the candidates, including President Glover's personal interview with the finalists. Trustee Davis has made a significant contribution to the board in her role. She has offered and contributed a student perspective to important issues the board has confronted in its first year of governance. Trustee Davis has served admirably as a member of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee and has attended numerous board committee meetings and been an active voice in addressing academic affairs and student affairs committee agenda items, as well as agenda items for other board committees from a student perspective. With trustee Davis's term set to expire in April 2018, the board must appoint a student to serve as the student trustee effective April 13, 2018, who will be seated at the June 21, 2018 board meeting. To assist the board in appointing the next student trustee, President Glover embarked on the same process utilized last year to select a student trustee as described above. The board's appointment of the new student trustee comes as a recommendation from the president. President Glover has recommended that the board appoint Ms. Braxton Simpson to serve as the next student trustee. Would you like to address the student this time?
Thank you, yes. Good afternoon. I'd like to ask Ms. Braxton Simpson to stand, please. Thank you. Ms. Simpson is a freshman honor student, majored in agribusiness in the College of Agriculture. She is a native of Atlanta, Georgia, actually Marietta. She's also a dean scholar and a member of minorities in agriculture and natural sciences and related sciences. Furthermore, she has secured a three-year paid internship with the Fortune 200 company, Monsanto, while also maintaining a 4.0 GPA. She is a member of the president's list, she's a student government, and she also serves as Miss Freshman. So let's welcome Ms. Braxton Simpson.
Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Braxton Simpson to serve as the student trustee on the Tennessee State University Board of Trustees effective April 14, 2018?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to appoint Ms. Braxton Simpson to serve as the student trustee on the Tennessee State University Board of Trustees effective April 14, 2018. Secretary Pendleton, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
I want to again thank trustee Davis for her service on the board of trustees. I'd like to ask you to stand and like to give you a round of applause for the service that you have put into this board. We have appreciated her presence and input and insight on board matters, as well as her commitment to the board. She's been a great example of the student leadership at Tennessee State University. Again, we thank you and we appreciate the efforts that you put forth.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the president's report. The chair recognizes President Glover, who will give her report.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Today, the agenda would include an update on accreditation, some of the accomplishments of TSU, the students, faculty, staff, and alumni, some of the challenges and concerns we've addressed with the faculty and staff, administrative restructuring, our legislative agenda, the new facilities, and then tell you about our commencement. The first is go over accreditation. Our report is due September 15 of next year with our SACC visit to start March 31 of 2020. Reaffirmation will cover all the revised standards from SACC COC. Emphasis on student placement will be considered this time. So we've scheduled meetings already each semester that are going to provide updates to the campus community. Dr. Lisa Mosley, the vice president for Academic Affairs, is spearheading the SACC reaffirmation efforts. Committees have already been established and are meeting already. Then the QEP enhancement plan, all we're going to say about that is that it's chaired by Dr. Joel Dark. He's associate dean and professor of history, and the first forum met was held on January 9th. We're already off to a start. We have two unit accreditations that's coming up this semester. Our in design is this month, later this month, and nursing is next month. So let's go over a few of the accomplishments. First with the students. We have 305 undergraduate students that have a cumulative GPA of 4.0. We thought that was commendable. And there are several more than that that have semester GPAs of 4.0, but I thought to have a cumulative was just amazing. Right now on campus, we're hosting a national forensic and debate competition that started yesterday, is going through the weekend. About 1,500 students from around the country, from almost 100 universities, are on campus now, and that's where, and we're the first HBCU to host it. And we are pleased that we have so many students on our campus, although we're close to spring break, they're still here with the forensic, and they're just wonderful. Another highlight, Ms. Braxton Simpson, we just talked, we just recognized a moment ago, the 4.0 first-year student has received a multi-year internship with Monsanto. Another is the honors convocation to be held on March 20. Convocation speaker will be Mr. Malik Bajay. He's a graduate, a 2003 graduate, honors graduate, and he will be our speaker. Another thing, the Student Tiger Patrol is really off to a good start. Those students will be sworn in on March 23 as parole office, student parole office. They just help the campus participate in all of our safety initiatives, and they take it very seriously. And finally, I want to tell you that Greek life is really important on our campus. They show there are some real leaders, and they do a lot of work on the campus, and all nine Greek-led organizations are on campus, and they're active, and they're, most of them are having an intake process this year. Some of the faculty achievements, Dr. Reginald McDonald, who's a associate professor of music and director of band, has been nominated for the Grammy Music Educator Award. Congratulations to him. Dr. Tamika Winston, interim chair in Department of Communications, is in the class of 2018, the protege for the Millennium Leadership Initiative Institute. Dr. Deirdre Young, she's in Extension Services, where research assistant professor in the College of Agriculture, has been selected to participate in the LEAD 21 Leadership Development for 21st Century. Dr. Eskimo Hargriff was here today, dean of College of Engineering, received an Ivy Home Award at the 14th Annual Information Technology. He's already received this, the senior award is based on the achievements in STEM and what he's doing in the STEM world. And then the TSU Office for International Affairs, where we see the 2018 Excellence in Diversity and Inclusion Award, and the International Education Award in Miami, and Dr. Joel Wynn will accept that award later in a few weeks. Now for the administration and staff. Coach Chandrick Cheeseborough, you know, the legendary Tiger Belle and director of track and field, will serve as assistant coach for Team USA as IAF World End of Championships. Then she's also inducted into the inaugural class for the National Track and Field High School Hall of Fame. Steve McCoury, interim director of Disability Services, was elected Chair of the National Alliance of Black School Education. And Thomas Graham, director of Emergency Management, was elected co-chair of the Higher Education Emergency Managers. Now some alumni achievers. TSU received an anonymous alumni contribution of $1 million to build... It wasn't me to build an alumni business welcome center. We do know who it is, but he has asked us not to make his name public just yet. We're really off to a good start with the experienced TSU recruitment campaign. It's been successfully launched, and it's just an innovative recruitment platform to It's been successfully launched, and it's just an innovative recruitment platform to attract academically talented students. We have saxophonist Jasmine Gents was voted best new artist of 2017 by the Smooth Jazz Network, that's a national syndicated radio program competition. Dwayne Kiwain, Ridders Second, is making moves in hip-hop, being nominated for several Grammys. He's produced some major hip-hop with artists like Beyonce and Drake. Now the university accomplishments. TSU hosted the screening of the newly released documentary, Mr. Temple and the Tiger Bells. It premiered last month on CBS Sports Network. We saw it on campus last night, we had it down at Avon Williams. We also did Tell Them We're Rising, the HBCU documentary that was sponsored in conjunction with T.HAC, hosted it on campus last month. TSU was selected as the most prepared institution in higher education in the area of emergency management, not just among HBCUs, but among all institutions. TSU was selected, if anything comes up in emergency management, we are the model. So TSU was selected as the most prepared institution. That was, we thought that was really great. Then students in the College of Business, that continues the voluntary income tax assistance program, which provides free tax preparation for the community. They've done this for a number of years, they continue it this year. The College of Agriculture conducted a hemp workshop, and it was packed. It had over 200 participants who learned about the industry and the various laws and policies, but those who want to be hemp growers and hemp producers. Then finally, I want to say we have a historical marker that's going to be unveiled on our campus. It says highlighting the military service lieutenant William McBride at, he's a Buffalo soldier, and he received a Medal of Honor. So that's going to be done for the next few weeks. Now, let me move to the area of campus concerns. There have been some concerns and challenges that we've endured and we've come through for these first few weeks of the semester. The three main areas were facilities management, enrollment, growth, and in our division of graduate studies. There were more than those, but these were the main ones. The first concern was facilities management. The concern brought to us was there was a slow response to repairs and maintenance, the problems that we're having, both in the academic buildings and in the residence halls. Then there were just concerns that continued about the poor state of maintenance of our campus facilities. And you know, some of them are just very old, about half of the buildings on campus are at least 50 years old, and I finished here in 1974, and there are some buildings that are still here when I was here without having significant repair and upgrades. So those were some of the concerns. So we put together a plan of action. So Department of Facilities Management has been restructured. Ms. Albert Hill has assumed a day-to-day responsibility for facilities matters and issues on an interim basis. It's all under the leadership of Ms. Cynthia Brooks. Then we've entered into some various contracts to catch up with the maintenance repairs around the campus, external contracts. They've done quite a bit of work already, but we've entered those external contracts. For each building on campus, we designated a manager. We still have a few left to designate, but those are to facilitate the work orders that's being completed in a timely manner, to make sure they are completed in a timely manner. Then we appointed an individual to be specifically responsible for maintaining student housing, and considerable work has been done during spring break on student housing. We still have more to go, but we want to thank that staff for taking care of the needs of the residence halls. And we began, we have begun an assessment of each building, just a plan for the ongoing maintenance issues, just a plan for it much better than what, well, and meet their needs. Last thing, we requested and we received a funding allocation in the governor's budget for $6.2 million for capital maintenance for the builders on campus, academic builders, not really residence halls. And I put in parentheses, that's a respectable number, we are very appreciative of that, $6.2 million. About $70 million is needed to ensure that the repairs and maintenance are done, that we need it to be done on campus for existing facilities. The second concern was enrollment. Enrollment declined last year and the year before that. So I just wanted to briefly show that the 2017 enrollment and 2016, 2016 is 8753, $8,753, and 2017 is $8,461. So it has declined those two years. The next is a chart that shows you the enrollment trend for the last five years, well, really six. You can see the enrollment for 2012, 13, 14, '29, '27, then 2015 is when it reached 9169, $9,027 up to $9,169. Then last year, we had to drop, 2016, 87, then down to 8461. So I want you to see the trend, which is why we had to really address enrollment. Part of it's strategic because we know that there are some things that we're taking a second look at to make sure that we're getting academically talented students. We've done some things in-house to help with our strategic growth, but still, we want to address the drop in enrollment. And to make sure, look at the graduation rates, we can address the retention, which is the other side of that coin. You can see retentions remain flat, I mean, the graduation rates remain flat. I don't have it yet for last year, but I don't suspect that it increased any. So here's the plan of action. We did bring on board a person to assist in enrollment management. Mr. Terrence Isid is associate vice president for enrollment management. Ms. Isid, would you stand, please? Thank you. So he's going to, he's responsible for recruitment and admissions. And then we have revised our recruitment plan that's going to include recruiting academically talented students throughout the state of Tennessee and in major metropolitan markets. We're going to various cities. We went to Atlanta, now to Memphis, Birmingham, then Nashville. Those kind of, Atlanta, Memphis, and Nashville are our major markets. Then we're bringing on some others, Birmingham, Chattanooga, and then some of the out-of-state areas, some other out-of-state areas outside the 250-mile radius. So we're placing emphasis on various populations, including the community colleges and non-traditional students, the students who have stopped out for whatever reason, and the veterans. And we're also looking at the delivery of education, for example, employing those marketing strategies of social media more effectively and content marketing and search engine optimization. And then a big is improve the processing time for admissions applications, and also increase our focus on retention and completion. The last concern was the increase, the enrollment of graduate school. Because we have such competition at undergraduate level with the Complete College Act and also with undergraduate students, with the competition undergraduate students, we raised the GPA, we raised, well, we raised admission standards overall, and then we had the competition in front of the community colleges. We thought we would focus more on the graduate school and the admissions process and just getting applications processed a little bit faster. So we're really putting a real emphasis on that in the graduate school. So we've named Dr. Robbie Melton as interim dean and Dr. Oscar Miller, interim associate dean. They have a good team they're putting together to work with them to make sure we can get just caught up on some things. Because they're going to implement an advanced application processing system that will expedite decision-making and just reduce the processing time, et cetera, and then make sure the right information technology is employed. Next. Then there was an organizational restructuring we're starting. We merged in the two divisions, administration, academic affairs, and some other areas, over the next few weeks. And we asked each vice president, the dean, directors on campus to look at their areas and let us know the best way to ensure maximum operational efficiency.
Before we go any further on that, Dr. Glover, didn't we also ask Dr. Sekman to work with us on a committee regarding the enrollment?
We did, and he and I spoke today about that. He's working with the enrollment issues that we've had, and he's been very forthcoming with some ideas. Thank you very much. As most of the legislative agenda, our funding request, we did ask for a million and a half to fund our security plan, some security initiatives we've submitted to the governor. $6.2 million for the campus maintenance that we've already got in the governor's budget. We hope it goes through. And then the land grant match. You know, we had, the land grant match should be a one-to-one match. The federal government has provided $6 million, we're supposed to receive another $6 million from the state of Tennessee. So we're asking this year, we've gotten a one-to-one for this year and last year. We're asking for a three-to-one ratio to be more competitive with the other land grant institution in our state. So we're bringing additional $12.8 billion if we are successful in getting that. Then we asked for $10 million for the Cumberland River Development Project. And legislation, I put it guns on campus. This year, there's not a bill that's really going to impact the colleges and universities. You know, there's been a big area of guns on campus, but this year, there doesn't seem to be a bill right now that's going to afford, that'd impact colleges and universities. We're doing some cleanup to the Focus Act, just to clarify certain of the code sections to account for some of the state university boards. Then there's a conflict of interest, we spent some time on a conflict of interest cleanup. It's just reiterating, the first couple of bullets, reiterating and clarifying what the financial and beneficial interest, and no board can have a financial or beneficial interest in higher education transactions, just clarifying that some. And then they're clarifying what it means to be an immediate family member. It could be a spouse, a parent, a grandparent, a sibling, a child, a grandchild, in-laws, adopted, half-sister, half-brother, step-sister, step-brother, any step-母. They have really expanded, clarified that definition, what it means to be an immediate family member. Of course, it excludes any gifts that you want to give, scholarships and philanthropic gifts and tuition payments. And then it prohibits a governing board member from receiving anything in excess of $250, anything of value. And with respect to the appointments of the governing boards after July 1, it further clarifies and prohibits a person from serving on a governing board if they have an immediate family member employed at the institution. So that's the main legislation. Let me just end by going over the facilities and doing proposed facilities we have. We plan, in 2018, we plan to break ground on two new residence halls. We're keeping our fingers crossed because we're going through the process that the state requires that we do. We're planning to construct the new Alumni Business Welcome Center, the new food sciences building, the new health science building, and then we're still acquiring the real estate adjacent to campus. And this is how the new health science building should look. I want to thank Dr. Curtis Johnson for getting this together for us, this rendering. And it will be between the women's center and the police station on campus. And so that's, we're looking forward to that one. And commencement? Commencement? Commencement, you know, with the Friday, Saturday, Friday evening. The speaker is Honorable Keisha Lance Bottoms, the mayor of the city of Atlanta. We're excited about that. And then for Friday morning is Dr. Eric Thomas, the world-renowned American motivational speaker, and the students are extremely excited about him. So that's our commencement, and that is, that ends the president's report, and thank you very much.
Well, we want to commend you for all that excellent work. Okay, is there any additional business to come before the board? If there's no additional business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved, Madam Chairman. So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. The question is on the motion to adjourn the meeting. Secretary Pillington, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Kribill.
Yes.
Trustee Freeman.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis. Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Sekman.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
The motion is approved and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.